Yep, please just fill in all.
Like to just start the meeting. Thank you everyone for attending the August meeting of the Rollins for Clinton Board. In attendance we have our consultant John Krebs, Mike Rollo, John Hensman, Kevin Haynes, Sid McLaughlin, Patrick Alley, and Karen Kendall is our alternate. Just as a outline of our procedures for tonight, since we do have a pretty heavy agenda. For each application, we're going to follow the same procedure. I'll seek a motion to accept the application as complete. We'll ask for a brief update from the applicant. After that, the board will discuss and ask any questions on the application. After that, we'll hold a public hearing at which point the public has a chance to ask questions or add comments. And then we'll close the public hearing and vote or something like that. Alright, so first on our agenda is, we have Politerian, 27 Silver Street.
My name is Jeff Aliva. I'm an engineer with Civil Consultants here representing Politerian with this proposed subdivision. Their lot on Silver Street is surrounded by the town cemetery to the west and the south, and another cemetery on the other side, so they're kind of surrounded by that. And what they'd like to do is divide their lot into two parcels. They live in the front and they would like to build a house in the back for themselves. We have a plan that's been presented to the code office. We started there and then went through. We had some review comments that were made by town staff. We've made those changes and submitted those plans. And that's pretty much it. As you can see on the plan, we have the property originally as kind of a square. We have a section coming out in the back. One of the plans kind of shows the proposed house in the back of the property. We have a driveway easement because the existing driveway goes to the garage that's on the property. And that's really it.
Okay. So when we saw this plan before, we talked about putting out a completely separate driveway.
Yeah, there will be a separate driveway that comes off on the western side that goes into the back of the property. John, if you could flip that to the other side. I know in the package, I think you provided a plan that's in there. Yep? So the other plan that's labeled L1 on there shows the proposed house in the back, how it meets the setbacks and the area out for where our soil scientists indicated where we have plenty of good soils for a single-family subject system. The property is serviced by town water.
Okay. Comments from the board? Kevin?
I have a question. I see where to gain frontage for the back lot, you extend it over into the current driveway of the front house. And I understand right now, obviously, they're owned by the same people. But in the event it becomes a subsequent sale later on, are you planning to record a deed to easement?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, that's, if you look on that line, you see that kind of dashed heavy line that's to the left of where the property line is. If you go to the other sheet of the Silver Street.
Kevin, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, but this area right here is the access easement, the easement that allows the driveway to remain. There's no other way they could ever get that driveway onto this lot without that easement. So yes, it's protected.
I remember that from last time.
Yep.
State road also, so.
Yep. We've applied for our driveway permit. The one thing that they want us to do is show them a section of how the grading goes off of their road on our driveway.
You've already made that.
Yep, absolutely.
Just give folks a minute to take this in. It's providing some flying power to the back as well. That'll just be simply drawn from the pole to the masthead or whatever. There'll be no additional poles required for that length.
No, no.
It's not underground.
Well, not necessarily. I wouldn't mind putting it underground across.
Yeah, I think the idea is that we come into where we can get it underground and take it down along the driveway to the office.
But that's not what you're reporting here today. Obviously, it's expensive.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we've shown anything on there on how the powers can get there, but.
Well, it does require a pole for that.
Oh, okay.
Requirement of subdivision.
Yeah, I brought it up on my review. That was my first.
Okay.
I didn't want to put that on there, John.
Yeah, I think we did on the subdivision plan. There was the additional note that we talked about.
Just the.
Yeah, right here. Lot number one benefits from an easement. The utility easement over to lot two. Maintenance existing utility wires on the driveway. All utilities servicing lot two shall be located underground.
Which is, I don't know if you have, I don't, I've never seen these for the first time.
It's lot fourteen, it's a new one.
Oh, okay. Jeff responded to my, he got my comments.
On the ten. Yep.
Okay, but you've got to reflect there.
Not either ten, then we came back and had that adjusted. You may not have that in your package. I don't think you have the updated plan based on the comments that came back. On the set.
So there's a number of other questions that Mr. Krebs had raised.
Yeah, yeah, so we did.
Have you all taken care of them in the plan?
Yeah, I can go through them with the board. We like the items that we did. We've changed the discussion on the indication about what the bounds need to be in the front and where we have indicated on the plan. We provided a letter to the town indicating that the PLS, the land surveyor that prepared this plan, is aware of the presentation, aware of the projects that are here tonight. And that we changed the note as indicated in comment number one. All utilities servicing lot two shall be located underground. So there were six comments and we've addressed those six on the plan.
I hate to do this to you, but I did miss something, Joe. I don't know, I really think we need to have pins on that easement, even item pins. Are those, is that, I can't tell if those are shown in the plan or not.
Yeah, no, those will be pins that be set on it.
Okay, okay.
Yep, yep.
Not that you care, but some would make here sometime. As long as, as long as it's our pens, that's fine.
Yep.
Is it actually in the asphalt, you mean?
No, no, no. Right here. Well, that was one of my, one of my comments. I said, you can't really put a bound here.
Right.
So what I suggested doing was putting it, I don't know where you set, Joe. Because this is in the middle of the pavement.
Yeah, yeah.
So where are you setting the bound?
The idea would be set there. We just drive it down below.
Oh, below, below the asphalt?
Yeah.
I don't care if you, I just, I mean, the, these are the two corners I'm talking about, though, that one and that one, which are, which are monumentally easement. I don't know about that one. I mean, I don't know if you want, you're a surveyor, but I would defer to your office, because I'm afraid if you put it. That's going to ease that driveway?
Yeah.
First of all, I don't want you to pound something to the asphalt.
Yeah.
But I'm afraid if you put one here, it's going to be confusing. I don't know, I don't know what the answer is.
I mean, we have, I mean, there's the, it's, it's in the plan and it's in the deed about where the properties are. And the deed, and the plan will be recorded, so as we, you know.
Is an offset monument stupid, like twenty feet away? Is it confusing?
I think it would be. I think an offset monument would be confusing in that situation.
Then I'll defer to you, because I don't want to cause any problems.
Yeah.
I think if we pin that, that, whatever else you pin.
Yeah, we've got the, in the back.
This is the only one I think we missed, Joe. I think it's, I don't think it's fair.
Through a driveway.
Yeah, I mean, that's going to introduce a little.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's.
That's fine.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Mr. Hensman is concerned over here?
No.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, I think it's safe to open our public hearing and accept comments from the public. Don't be shy. If you could just state your name and your address, please, sir.
Yeah, Mark Kucha, 204 Somerset Road, Rollins. Did a butter notices go out on this project?
Yes. They must have, right?
I got one.
Yeah, absolutely. And it was noticed in the paper.
Nothing, nothing went out to the cemetery?
The cemetery is the town, so yes, it did.
It would have just gone to the town.
Would have been nice to get notified, you know.
Can you tell me your address again?
204 Somerset. Anything else?
I just wanted to follow up on that. There was, I did make a comment in here that, my comment number six, and I found this with, I think, all three applications. The statute requires that anybody that stamps these plans be notified of meeting. So generally, they're, if you look at the butters list, they would be, you'd see all the butters, and you'd see the licensed professionals that stamp these plans on that list. Jeff didn't do that, but he did provide a letter saying that, I mean, he shared an office with Chris, and they, so he provided a letter to the board saying that he was aware of this meeting, but from now on, we need to make sure. And I don't know why, how that sort of tracks, but they.
A whole lead up in our process?
Well, I, no.
They're notification, I've seen that one once already, so if I missed that one, I caught a couple that.
Yeah.
So.
It's just that anybody that stamps these plans, that word is sort of, generally, they don't, they don't stamp them, so you got to look at who, 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 who the surveyors and who the wetland scientists.
So it's tough, because like, really, the onus of that, I mean, we check it, but the onus is.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I don't, you shouldn't do it, because if you make a mistake, then people may be pointing at you. So it's their mistake. Jeff acknowledged it, and he remedied it, so. But just going forward, we, you know, anybody that certifies these plans should be notified or has to be notified. So, but that's been remedied, so I'm.
Yeah, I guess we take it for granted that we're all in the same office and we're working together on the project, okay?
Doesn't always happen.
John, but you're right. But that doesn't always happen everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're good with public comments. So I would open up.
I'm glad we found the application.
Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? So it's supposed to be the first thing we did. That's okay. Additional discussion?
I mean, the only thing, if you're going to approve this, and I think it's ready to be approved, but the only condition that I have is that the licensed land surveyor needs to give you a certificate of mine invitation. What, do you have that?
We don't, but typically, we don't do that until the, until that goes in before they pull a building permit.
Yeah, well.
Well, is that, is that process?
Well, I, I mean, I want it, I want it before the plan is recorded, because.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that way we know it's done.
Yep.
It's easier to follow, you know. But that's the only condition.
Entertained a motion for conditional approval having proof of mine invitation. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Application is approved. And once we have that certificate, I'll make arrangements to sign this.
Okay, come on.
Getting the certificate of mine invitation.
And so they won't, you won't sign the mylar until the bounds are in, or is that?
Here's what you're going to do. You're going to set the bounds.
Yeah, okay.
The rest is going to give, is going to provide, you're going to write out quick.
Yep.
Certificates, I need to send them.
Yep.
You're going to give that to Miles with mylar, and he'll sign them.
All right, perfect.
That is, you have his email address, anyway, someone?
I do, yeah.
Just contact him. It could be tomorrow or the next day, so.
I'm flexible.
And then, do we want to talk about the recording?
Yes, so if the tax collectors agreed to start recording again, so we're going to work out the process and the actions with all of this.
So you'll turn over the mylar?
To the town.
And pay a fee. To Carol.
Someone here.
At this point, it'd probably be easier to just go with Caroline.
And she'll, along with, and we don't know what the fee is, but there's going to be an administrative fee to just hand deliver it, plus the recording, so the L shift fee.
All right, okay. So we'll talk, we'll talk with you.
I just want to stick around at the end of the meeting and figure out how we're doing it.
Well. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Rollins Realty Trust. Justin Doe. These are not, these are the same things. How many are these?
Do you want smaller?
Sure.
I can find you a job. I pay easel.
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Can you put that one out?
I didn't know if you wanted to accept the plan to the application first, or do you want me to just write it and do my thing?
Yeah, I think that, I think we're per John's analysis, we would be ready to accept the application as complete. Okay? All in favor of accepting the application as complete?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so nice to have it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Lynch. I'm here on behalf of Rollins Realty Trust, as is Michael Point hiding behind me drawing.
The easel.
We came before you, I believe, probably a couple of months back, just on a preliminary basis to talk about this project. Rollins Realty Trust is the owner of the property. This is basically a project for CNJ Transportation. So from here on out, we refer to it as CNJ, it's a little bit easier. Essentially, if you look at the cover sheet, what we're working with is a 2.1 acre, 2.2 acre parcel of land. It used to be comprised of two parcels, one owned by the town of Rollinsford and the other one by the St. Villiers. One portion of this whole project will include a lot merger being acted on by you folks. That's probably one of the initial actions. Beyond that, the proposal is to construct a three-day bus storage facility, much in the same fashion as the one that's further up the road across from Clearwater, a well-drilled company. The building is 58 feet wide by 60 feet long. We are providing two access points off of Jesse Doe Road. We are asking for a waiver on the width of those driveways necessary to accommodate the turning radiuses for buses moving in and out of the facility. We've set it up so that the bus maneuvers work in both directions, but primarily, the buses will arrive from their routes, head up to the main maintenance facility, probably go through the wash, and then come back down the road and depart in this building overnight or whatever period of time. And then they'll leave after the driver arrives, parks in one of the parking spaces that we've allocated. They'll depart and head out on their route the next day, business day. There will be no public sewer or water to this building. It is strictly a storage facility. One thing I would point out is we are accommodating floor drains inside the building. The floor drains are necessary to pick up when buses arrive back from the wash or it's a real messy day in late March, early April, and that slush and the buses. It's a place for the drippings to be accumulated, and we are running to a holding tank, onsite holding tank. We have a holding tank registration approval from here to DES, which I believe I sent to you, but if you don't have it, I can talk to you later this evening. So that will accommodate any kind of runoff from the buses inside the building. Other than that, we run underground electricity off the dirt bowl that's in front of the site. In order to accommodate this facility, there's a large amount of wetlands on this site. I could draw your attention back to the cover sheet. I tried to depict on there the wetland limits on the subject parcel. Check it here, right? So the wetland limits right now are right through here on this particular site. The remainder of the property goes this way, another 215 feet and another 170 feet, so quite a stretch down that direction. If you look at the cover sheet, the wetland area actually extends even over to the adjacent parcel, also owned by Rollins Realty Trust. So there's a large wetland area in there, and what we're doing is we're encroaching in your 50-foot buffer for pavement of 562 square feet of pavement and 561 square feet of slope. In other words, earth moving within the 25-foot buffer. We've been to the conservation commission about a month ago. I believe we received a favorable recommendation, although I haven't seen it in the brain yet.
I haven't, yeah.
So, am I correct? It's seemingly well-received and?
Yes.
It did have one recommendation, I think, of all.
Yes.
But just about the plant, I guess.
Yeah.
Encouraging the plant evergreen supreme. Their plan currently includes native conver, this one, but front roadside, front roadside of the building. So, yeah, we can discuss.
Okay, so the other action we can use to act on the conditional use approval as well. We have a landscaping plan that essentially has those four trees along this buffer right here. That's to kind of hide the building more than anything else as you come into Church Street. And then we have four birches, which I'll get to later, planted along the side of the road on our property, but along the side of the road. So that's the extent of our landscaping. We have building lighting similar to what we have at the other facility. It'll be LED shielded lighting along the building to light up the individual doorways, but we are going to expand that lighting so that we have a fixture right here at this parking area for security for the drivers. Beyond that, we are essentially, if there's anything extraordinary here that I can touch upon, maybe where I should mention is that we have received comments from both Civil Consultants and from Mr. Krebs. And suffice it to say, I don't know if you want me to go through these in detail, but we don't have any objections. We just have one question.
There was a mistake.
Okay.
Comment number one.
Yeah, the last couple of sentences.
Caroline mentioned something to me on the phone the other day, and I didn't realize it, but, yes, it's a mistake.
Okay.
So my comment number one should say lot, lot line eliminated by, by lot version granted by the planning board, period.
Yep.
The rest of that, I don't know where it came from, but it's not your main, it was fine.
And we're more than happy to comply with that comment, understanding what its intent is.
But if you want to put some lights in the way.
We're good.
Yeah.
We will improve the sheet numbering. That was an oversight on my part. I had a question concerning comment number three, and I think now that I've mulled it over in my mind, as it takes some time for me to understand the comment, I think we can simply address this by, if you look at our sheet three, I have extended the Cape Cod Birm, as it's called, CCB, I've extended it all the way out to the existing edge of pavement, which really is not necessary. And I, what I would offer to do here, I've done it on all the driveways, is I will just truncate that Cape Cod Birm at the driveway line, and then there's no need to ask for a waiver.
No, but granted, do you?
No, I don't want to put granted in, and I have photos. There is no granted anywhere in the industrial park at any of the entrances. So what I was forced to do in this case is to treat it like we treated the other physical storage building. We have Cape Cod Birm on the sides of the driveways, that building, but it does not extend all the way out to the edge of the street further. So that solves that. We don't have to ask for a waiver.
Yep. Unless you want to talk, if the road is fine with it, I've got no problem.
Well, the more I thought about it, I understand what your comment is, is the, if the town piles, it's going to knock out.
Yeah, and they don't want the maintenance of it, so I wouldn't say.
Perfectly reasonable.
Okay. That's a good thing.
Stamps on the plans, we typically just kind of hold off on those until we've gone through the whole thing, rather than stamping them multiple times. I've already touched upon the fact that we were more than happy to light that parking area for the employees. The birch trees, I will make a note on there that they're intended to be measured as two and a half inch caliper, 12 inches above the finished grade. That's the intent. That's my understanding, my understanding from my landscape front expertise, standard approach. The topic you just touched upon in the previous application regarding notification of licensed professionals, we did in fact drop off revised labels and list about two days after the meet, this official application back in late June. So I think we've got covered.
Yeah.
Okay. So Mark and, I guess there's, I guess.
Yeah, Mark, Paul, myself, everybody got a notice.
Okay.
You mentioned had any issue with conditional use permit on that, and again, we agree that the notice of merger probably should be acted on as part of the site plan application. Skipping over very quickly, and I know your time is of the essence here, Civil Consultants has comments, none of which we have a problem with. They're all good comments. We do need to fine tune some numbers in our drainage analysis, but I do not believe that my professional opinion will change anything, just some corrections. And again, as I said before, none of their comments, they're mostly tidying up the plans and making them a little more consistent. For example, on our handicap parking space, it's all detailed. If the dimensions do not match the town standards, even though we laid them out to match the town standards, so, little things like that. So that, in essence, again, I don't have any problem with responding to all of their comments. I would humbly request that if you are comfortable with seating, act on the lot line merger or conditional use permit, and if you feel comfortable to give a conditional final approval, something to both of these professionals signing off that we respond to their comments, that might save you another chance to sit down and enjoy a summer evening with them.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Open it up to comments, questions from the board.
Could you comment on the stormwater note with what is, let us know what that, what that's about? Is that a concern that because it's saying that you use a different, use grass cover with forestry covers who they use, does that affect the stormwater coming off this property?
This is for Civil Consultants.
Right. Yes, that was still more to review and have... Essentially, there appears to be a little bit of confusion as to whether this existing tree line was used or the proposed total slope was used. And it's a matter of a few hundred square feet difference. We will check those numbers, but I, again, in my professional opinion, I don't believe it will render any type of difference in the pre and post development analysis. We will perform all those changes and make sure that Jay Stevens is staying comfortable with it. I'm not concerned about it. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So at this point, why don't we open the public hearing to accept comments from the public? Any questions?
So you're leaning forward 26 Washington Street. Is the lighting on the building, I cannot see, directed only at the building and it's not going to overflow onto the road or anything like that?
Correct. We have to do a photo, what they call a photometric analysis. And so we have an area of coverage for the light, but the idea is that it be directed downward and it only extends out from the building about 12 feet.
Okay.
So it lights the area right around the doorways. And the new light fixture that we will propose will be around the parking area, those four parking spaces. And that will be the same type of lighting, downward directed lighting, LED lighting, energy efficient lighting.
Dana, what's the sheet number in the photometric?
Sheet number four. The goal for me when I made that comment was I want to make sure there's not zero light, there's not zero foot candles between the parking area and the building. So it may require two spaces, I'm sorry, two light bulbs. I just don't think it's fair to ask, you know, an employee to walk at nine o'clock at night in the winter of the night with no light between the parking area and the building.
That's a fair...
So one light might do it.
We will put in the appropriate light fixture. We don't want it to be any higher than it has to be.
No.
If it needs to be, we will bring two, but it will conform to the same photometric design standards.
And my question was geared towards this intersection where the railroad tracks is. Living in that neighborhood, I just want to make sure that drivers are coming back and forth and it's not going to affect the roadway.
No, it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't hit the property.
And so your plan is only to have buses in and out of here a couple of times a day? So it shouldn't affect the track a couple of times?
It's not going to affect the number of buses that go running out at all. Basically, we have parking for 23 buses, maybe parking for 28. So this will get me three more, get me a little closer. We don't let, we don't have snow on our buses, you know, like some of the bus companies. And trucks will go down the highway, the snow will blow off. We don't do that. That wasn't part of the plan, sorry.
And they'll go down over the railroad tracks instead of down under the bridge, is that correct? Or whichever way is feasible?
Yeah, go through. But normally now, most of them go over the railroad tracks because they go to Dover.
I'm sorry, sir, can you repeat your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike DePointe with C and J bus lines.
Is it Mike DePointe or Love?
Love.
Okay. I was just concerned about the intersection because that's a point of contention sometimes in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. So we want to suspend the public hearing, close it in case we have to open it back up. Is that right, John?
Yep, I would.
Anything else from the board? Any other concerns?
Do you want to talk about the Conservation Commission letter?
Oh.
Dana sort of brought it up, because if you read my comment number three, number seven. Yeah, I mean, they're not a salt town tree, but if you look at where they planted them on the lot, they're, I don't know what, 30 feet from the edge of pavement, quite a ways. I don't really, roadside, I don't really care about the fact that they're not salt towns. As long as I understand that if they die, they have to replace them. And I don't want to have to replace trees every year. But Dana, I haven't been out there, but I know that you've used birches for success before, so it's just a comment. You know, I don't, if anybody has any strong feelings about using a different species of tree, that'd be great, but as long as they maintain them.
That's what we have out there now. I don't, I can't tell you the exact, that's birch trees. On the harbor.
So she's saying that you propose to plant a specific native conifer?
Oh, that's, that's those four down along the railroad tracks.
Okay. So their comments really address that landscaping, the evergreen screen? And the use of the specific, no?
Your proposal, what is the... Mont Ben Dumas. Are they like an indigenous tree that ever exists?
So the letter says we strongly encourage them to plant evergreens green. They're planting currently includes a specific native conifer along the front or inside of the building. We also asked for details about managing runoff of a parking lot during the flooring of the building. It appears from the plans that they have thoroughly addressed these concerns and we were satisfied with this small encouragement on the wetland or by the community. So really, they don't have an issue?
Okay, they're cool, okay.
Yeah. And in fact, in the first paragraph, it said the board voted unanimously to recommend a permanent plan as it presented.
Okay, cool. So I think like in terms of process, or Miles, I'm sorry. In terms of process, the two things you should act on are the lot merger first. And then, I don't know if you have a copy of the waiver, but I can give it to you if you don't have it. It's in the application package. I can give you both, actually. Here, pass it down. The waiver's on top, the merger's right below it. So I would act on the merger first and then act on the waiver of three E, which is the driveway width. And then decide if I can handle the application.
So we would, we would need a motion to approve a merger at least to what?
That's all you need to do.
I mean, and then you... All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Oh, and I lied to you, the conditional use permit, I forgot that. So I don't know what you want to do in terms of, maybe the conditional use permit first, then the waiver of three E.
Right.
And I don't know what the conditional use permit is because I just gave you that packet. But Dana, I can probably tell you what the section is.
Sure.
It might be right behind you. Yeah, I believe it is. But in case, the conditional use permit pursuant to zoning ordinance section 6.7, Wetland Conservation District Paragraph Two. And the relief saw it relates to the dimensional requirements described in paragraph 4A1 and 4A2 of said section 6.7. So if that isn't confusing, basically, it's just for the working.
Right. So from the wetland edge extending 25 feet?
Those are the specific requirements that you have stated in your zoning ordinance?
Okay. So is anyone comfortable making a motion to issue conditional use permit? So I think we just want to conclude. That we...
So you're going to make a motion that you request to approve the conditional use permit pursuant to the town of, the zoning ordinance section 6.7, paragraph two? Oh, sorry.
I can remember the first one.
There you go.
So which, which, it's pursuant to...
Which one's the top?
Top two.
Six, seven, two.
All right, so I'll move that we grant conditional use, sorry, conditional use permit pursuant to the town of Rollins, there's only ordered in section 6.7, Wetland Conservation District Paragraph Two, as it relates to the dimensional requirements described in paragraph 4A1 and 4A2 of the format of section 6.7.
Curious. A second on that?
Second?
Just so everyone's clear, is there any discussion and questions on what we're proposing here? Okay, hearing them. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That motion passed. And then the waiver for three E for the driveway width.
Widths, actually. Widths, right. So we don't have any light safety concerns for reducing the size? Fire trucks will still, you have a bus, they're matching.
We're making it wider.
You're making it wider. We're making it wider.
Wider than a lot. Yeah, the fire trucks will dip now.
The town's requirement for a one-way driveway or maximum for one-way driveway. So you're going the other way. You're going 30 feet to accommodate the buses, which will also accommodate fire vehicles. It's the similar waiver we had to ask for.
Sure. When you were describing earlier, you said that, or something?
Just, I don't, I probably shouldn't have been on some of the owners, but I will. The fire chief, do you have an animal, they don't care about getting around this building. There's absolutely no reason. I mean, if there is a fire, they're going to fight it from one and the other.
Yeah, they can fight it from three different sides.
Okay. The last thing, I actually know was three.
Three, three easily.
Well, you can't go behind that, but I would, I would...
Railroad tracks.
I wouldn't want to go in front either, so I just need to walk.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to make a motion regarding the waiver that can guard the section, Article Three, Section Three E, that we grant a waiver to allow for two 30-foot wide one-way driveways since that's sort of accounted for project design vehicles, buses, and their associated training rate I requirements.
Sorry, which one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing them. Which brings us to a conditional approval of the entire application pending sign-off from the professionals for the changes that we talked about.
Can we go over the list before we talk about the condition?
I honestly don't want to see Dana again. We may want to see him again.
Let's just go through the list.
Sure.
So obviously, number two, the sequencing is pretty straightforward on the pages. Number three, they're going to remove the quotinous Cape Cod berm within the right-of-way on both driveways.
All right.
Three and four, they're going to have stamps on the plans. Five, there's a little bit of a judgment call. They're going to light the area between the parking area and the area between the parking area and the building. I think number nine, they need to add a note on the record on the final plan saying that the conditional permit granted on today's date.
It's right here.
And then do you have a waiver note?
Yes.
Let's go see if you have a waiver.
Yeah, I really guess I have no problem with conditional waivers. I mean, a conditional, as long as, yeah.
So Jay Stevens got to, you know, issue a plain bill and all that. And I can look at these minor things, but, and so then the other thing would be a final review by the town and where, you know, we are going to all. See if he gets it back.
Just further on that, can I get clarification exactly on what items of Jay Stevens' concerns that you would like to...
Well, that's why it's always a roll of, you know, Dana's sitting here saying he can, he can address them all. And he does, and he agreed, and he, I don't know if he agrees with them. He will, he will deal with it. So what we want is a letter from Jay Stevens saying, I have no issue. If he has one issue, it's a sticking point, then they would have to come back.
Yeah, they have to come back.
So Dana said he can work at OJ, if it's a huge company, he can work it up. That's what we want.
Can we give a summary of the issues that you are going to address?
Be happy to, I'll go through them quickly. Sheet one, the cover sheet, I mean, dated November 11, should reference road standards for the town of Rollinsford. And parking calculations notes suggest that planning for determination. That might be something we want to discuss, but we propose three parking spaces plus a handicap parking space because we have three buses, three driveways.
I made the calculation, but it seems logical.
There wasn't anything else they covered, particularly in the use of regulations. On the existing conditions plan, the legend needs to be embellished to include the wetland line. We probably should use a different line type, like a high-intensity soil line, no problem. Just a matter of a CAD operation there. We need to complete the sheet number. It says sheet two of blank, I believe. And I also need to make note of the high-intensity soils mapping, which was done by Joe Noel. This is what I, this is what I noticed. There's some scale issues on the graphic scale on sheet three. They would like us to add directional arrows to the pavement. I think that's a great idea. Again, the sheet number, proposed clearing line, limit line, it's difficult to differentiate from other lines. So again, we'll make an adjustment in the CAD presentation. There's a typo on pavement radius. It's not 52 feet, it's actually five feet. And they asked the question, will stabilized construction entrance be used at both driveway entrances? You know what stabilized construction entrances? It's basically a 50 or 75-foot approach of large stone so that the construction vehicles don't in and out of the site during construction prior to paving, don't track mud and debris out onto the public roads. We're going to put them at both entrances. Yes, that's fine. Site lighting, again, the scale adjustment, not a minor, a minor thing. Photometrics is misspelled.
That's an inferior thing.
Sheet numbers are already complete. And the designer, I had already talked to Jay about this. The designer indicated that a light is being added to the car parking area for safety. So we're going to do that. Parking stall detail, I think I mentioned during my presentation. We laid it out correctly, but we didn't put the correct numbers on our detail. We had a strike in detail, so there's a mismatch there. They have no comments on the rest of the plans. They suggest that the plans be stamped, which they will be. And the stormwater review we touched upon. So I think, you know, I don't object to any of these, so we can accommodate all those changes.
That was the full, thank you.
If you, if you're going to reprint these to give them to a board, are you going to eliminate that lot line? What are we going to do about that?
We're going to put a note on it as you requested, lot line.
But now the merger is granted, should we just get rid of it?
Well, your notes, I thought was a good note because you already said lot line eliminated by merger.
Okay.
Lot merger granted by the Rollinsville anymore. Did that cover it?
That's fine.
So with that, are we prepared to entertain a motion to accept this other question? So all in favor of accepting, of approving the application with conditions which we listed? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing them. Application approved, condition.
We will make the submission of plans to John and to civil consultants to solicit the letter. We'll also make a CC Catherine or Sarah vote, just so you know that the submission has been made to the consultants. And once we get letters back, we will then finalize the plans and get details through.
Okay. So as you might have heard earlier, we're implementing a new recording plan.
You don't, you don't have to record it. We don't record it, it's a type plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, great.
Makes it easier. Unless you wanna try to record this thing. No, they don't like us to record such plans as our history.
Okay.
But there is the lot line.
The merger.
The application gets filed?
I think the, I think the form gets filed.
Yes.
The form itself gets filed, so yeah, we do need to, that, you have it, files? That needs to be filled out by, that needs to be signed by both the applicant and by the board, I believe. You have my copy.
Oh, sorry.
Well, you have it, but that form needs to be filled out.
You have it signed?
That's what I wrote down.
Can I have that back, though?
Well, we need to fill this form out.
Oh, okay.
I probably have a copy.
We will have Rollinsville Trust sign that and get that back to.
Well, let's talk about it, who is Rollinsville, because I know, I know you, like, you signed the plans.
Yeah.
Who is, or the application, who, who, who's gonna sign this?
From?
Jim.
Yeah, Mr. Delbert.
So I, I think, you've got this all filled out, you want to, how do you wanna handle this? You wanna have them complete this form, but this isn't a?
It's a complete form, it just needs signatures.
Does it need to be completed?
Do you have a clean copy of this? Do you have a clean copy of that?
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I do.
Mine's a little tangled. Well.
Do you have a clean copy? I can give you a clean copy out of this package that I sent you.
Yeah, just tear it down immediately. Well, it's like, we're not gonna do it tonight anyway.
I was gonna say, I just guess you don't sign it until Mr. Delbert signs it. Yeah, I think that's the problem, too. Okay, so I will get Mr. Delbert to sign it, and I will bring it in for the board's signature.
Okay.
And I will make sure that, you know, where he's kept in the loop, that it's been sent in or brought in, and we'll take it from there. And then we will. It's a little filing fee that we will.
I guess we will report this, so, so we will report this.
Yes, you will report that.
So we will charge you.
Absolutely.
And we don't know how much we're gonna charge you.
Oh, no, you're welcome to say.
We can't go ahead with this project if you're gonna charge us for that. It's gonna be, it's gonna be small, it's gonna be, that's all I know of.
So what if she does two at once?
I don't know, it's your fault, see, I would definitely, I would charge her double, I don't know, we need to, we, I guess we need to figure it out.
You tell us what the fee is, and we'll make sure, we'll figure it out, so, but I will make sure Mr. Delbert signs it first.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we need a little break?
Mr. John, do you, do you make that up?
No, you have it.
I just don't want it to.
No, sorry, thanks, no problem.
Do you need to add a word, deal? So, we're gonna try to make it.
I think.
All right. Moving right along. Two twenty-four, someone's returned, and we're covered. So John, did you, did you, so, John, did you not have a chance to review this after?
I did.
Oh, you just?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Page three.
Yes, page three, I didn't get, all I got was this, so I didn't get an application.
Okay.
I didn't tell about it.
I have a lot of seventeen, I don't know if you have those or not, I just got.
It's a large.
Here.
Yeah, maybe you need to work them out.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I just might say, even if the application is ready to accept it, I might, I wanna give you a little bit of a background on how this is, because I think it's a little, little more complicated, maybe not, so, but let's, let's.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about it.
So anyways, this lot that we're talking about was created in two thousand thirteen with four lot subdivision, three lots that were on Greenview Drive, which is to the rear of the property, and then this lot that we're looking at here, that's under review plan. Then in two thousand and fourteen, we submitted an application for a site review that allowed this, the construction of the building that's there right now. So in two thousand and fourteen, there was a site review application submitted, in two thousand and fifteen, it was approved by this board. I'm not sure how many members were on at that time, I think it was pretty much a clean slate at this point. So as part of that application, we, we asked for a waiver for, from the landscaping requirements and a waiver from the HISP map, because we had done the HISP map, we were in the subdivision, and it really didn't lend any advantage to what we were doing with the site plan review. As part of that site plan review, we showed a septic system that was installed since that was approved, and there was a driveway that was installed since that was approved, and some other various things as part of that site review application. This little pad here that has a Quonset hut on it, which is a storage facility, that was shown on the plan as to be kept in place, okay? So I looked through my files.
You don't have a copy of that approved site plan?
Well, what I have here is, and I don't know, I asked Carolyn about that, the file, if she could look at it, we consider it complicated, fine. So I just wanted to recap this at this point, just to what does we should, either be here, or if we're just looking for a change of use versus a site plan review. So I have a email here from. So this email is from my office manager, Cheryl, who was here before to present this plan, I could not make that, that plan book, so. It said, and then Pat Mclemm was the chair at the time, she said, "Good morning, Pat, we are ready to submit the final claims of the town following the planning board approved. Could you tell me the items that are to be delivered, how many copies, large and small, digital, I hope to deliver them today." So then Pat breaks back and says, "Just use the guidelines in the site plan recently submitted, and the added digital copy would be, would be good." So then she wrote back, Cheryl wrote back. This is, Cheryl wrote back, January twentieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
Okay? "As previously submitted, six small-sized copies, twenty-four by thirty-six, and four small, eleven by seventeen sets of the site plans, existing conditions and proposed site plan will be delivered to the town today. I've also attached PDFs for these two sheets. Additionally, I've attached, I have delivered a copy of the state approval letter and stamp plans for your files." And as part of that, I also have. This is a copy of a letter dated December fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and really submitted all of the applications. That letter requests or submits the design standards for the high-intensity soil that we're asking a waiver for and the landscape plan that we're asking a waiver for, and also for the traffic generation, because at that point, I mean, it would be minimal. So at the time that that was submitted, the facility was to be used for turgid construction, for maintenance of their construction. Since that time, Dan Peppin, who was here, was the applicant, has, has opened that up to not just turgid construction, he also does their work, but also construction, excuse me, maintenance of other vehicles open to the public. So my thought is, maybe this should be, instead of a site review application, maybe it should be a change of use application. But I'll leave that up to you to discuss. I can tell you that we've addressed, or I, I can tell you how I would, would address your comments, John, if we want to move ahead with the site review application, but I just wanna make sure we're on the same page of what we should be reviewing.
So John, I would look to you for your.
Well, I don't remember, I mean, I was here in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and fourteen, I think Kevin was. I don't really, I.
I actually just found the minutes.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I was here.
What's that?
I was here for that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so, you know, I, I guess I remember this coming in, but it was sort of a low-key, you know, like Kevin said, you know, small building to do maintenance on, construction vehicles. It's my opinion, and I, I, you know, it started with, it really started with your view, saying that you needed a site plan, I think, but because of the change use, sort of the measure of, of what kicks off a requirement for a site plan review usually is, is the increase in intensity of a site. So if this was approved for a retail facility, and they're moving, and they're changing to a warehouse, the intensity would decrease, thereby not requiring change use. It, it's my opinion, and again, you don't need to, you don't, you may not agree with me, but it's my opinion, because all of a sudden now we're bringing the public in here, it changed the intensity, I like, I would never have agreed to waiting for landscape or lighting, or we had, I thought, had I known the public was gonna be in here. That, to me, is the difference. If it's just a construction company, they probably don't appear, now, I think it's different, but that's, that's my opinion, and therefore, I think a review is required.
Probably than my opinion of John's statement there is, I would agree with that, that at the time this was first proposed, and there were several other items. One question to ask is that everything that was part of that fifteenth approval has been addressed on the subject, everything will be.
And I don't have a copy of the occupancy permit, but they've been operating since two thousand and fifteen, so I'm assuming they have an occupancy permit otherwise.
But on the same train, I thought, yes, but you've got, now you've got increased traffic across the site.
Sure, no, I totally understand, I just wanted to get the, the background, so we all know what we were talking about, whether it was a change of use or a, or a site plan review. We're, we're ready to move ahead, whichever you decide, there's no, that's not an issue.
Okay, I, I tend to agree with that, this lends itself more to a, a site plan review, given that the, the change in use of the, the property. So with that, our first order of business would be to accept this application as complete, so it could be back to the board.
Did you have an opportunity to review the application?
I reviewed the site plan, I haven't, I have not seen the application, so I, I guess, I, I mean, the plans are, I think they're complete enough to accept it, start the block. I don't know what was submitted in the application.
Kevin, could I ask you a question while I'm talking to John?
Sure.
So if the prior, you had a prior, you find a prior representative here, it was a woman in.
Yeah, Cheryl, from my office.
And the concern that I, I came away from that prior presentation was that there was, whether or not the prior, you know, conditions of the prior site plan that met was not, was, was up in the air, I guess I.
She was not clear on that.
Well, what, what, I believe that she, it's my recollection, I'm getting older, but I thought there was some acknowledgements that some things had not been done, when I know we're questioning about that, and I'm, I guess I have a concern about, you know, how do we as a board determine whether or not those have been done, which, you know, the partners were there for before.
Right.
Are you representing they've been done, everything was done before?
You know, to be honest with you, I, without the minutes and what was actually approved, it's difficult for me to say that.
I can, I can tell you what, I mean, I have the minutes here from that meeting, and I can tell you what, what it is.
I don't think it'll matter, though, Sarah, because, I mean, without, without, what we really need is, and what we don't have, is a copy of the approved site plan from two thousand and fifteen, and then someone goes out and feels, yup, it's all done, that's what we don't have. I mean, I, I don't know if there's a certificate of occupancy issued, you know, just because it was issued doesn't necessarily mean the building inspector said, hey, you know, what's the deal with this Quonset hut, they already had power, you know, but wasn't that, the plan where to allow that? And that would be on the site plan, I don't, I mean, we never discussed compliance after, after it was approved, so I don't think the minutes are gonna tell anything, other than what we're talking about, but.
It says a lot about the Quonset.
Oh, it does? Well, it does say about the Quonset hut.
This is the, it's staying, and it's gonna be included on the plan.
No.
Which it, which it was.
It was, it was on the plan.
Yeah, so there you go, and it's that.
And then, I think another issue that's interesting is, somebody asked if they were planning to store any fuel on site, and the answer was no, at the time.
I think the condition, if I'm not mistaken, when that was put on, they would, they would have thought that they would comply with all applicable state and federal regulations at the time?
Yeah.
I think that was the condition approved.
Yes, exactly, any future fuel storage shall conform to all, I mean, state and township and town and Rollinsville regulations.
Do you store fuel on there?
No.
There's no fuel storage right now, it's, it's just vehicles.
The biggest issue was that we didn't know what would result from the landscaping.
Right, right.
Clearly.
Well, we asked for a waiver at that time, so, you know, if, if this is a new application, we'd know.
Like we have the site currently, that's why we were concerned, because we didn't think anything had been done, but.
Exactly.
For a waiver.
Clearly, you didn't have to.
You didn't have to, right, have to, okay, it makes more sense for us now, I think, and the Quonset hut was, and so.
Yeah.
The minutes were like, they were gonna keep it.
Anything else?
No, three.
No, it did mention the HISP waiver and the other waiver thing, the landscaping plan.
Traffic analysis, maybe?
Traffic analysis is not mentioned, although driveway permit application had been submitted, I don't.
I've gotten a driveway permit, it's.
Yeah, it's right.
And then, was, did your septic design get approved?
Septic design's approved and installed, and the, in Rollinsville, there's a review process for septic that gets submitted to the state, so the town actually has a review of their own, which I have the approval.
Oh, you have the approval, right there.
Yeah, I get the, the approval.
That was, that's bad news, Dan.
Right. So the only thing that I can tell you that I'm not sure was done, and I don't even know something necessarily specific about the lighting that was requested?
Lighting was not discussed specifically, it was discussed generally, but not specifically.
But no conditions have been, have been, so, there hasn't been any lighting, that's why I, you know, installed, that's why I was wondering whether it was a condition. What, what John's comments are, is adding some lighting, adding some, some landscaping, if you want me to present what, what I think we can do to, to do that, or if we wanna go through John's comments, that's fine.
So why don't we, why don't we accept the application?
Yes.
That's probably the way we've got the application. Thank you, sir. Should I have a second? This is, this is probably my, I was. Okay, all, all in favor of accepting the application as complete?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're good.
Do you want me to run through my comments quickly?
Yeah.
And Kevin can respond.
I know, that'll be fun.
So my first comment is, well, it's, it's, obviously, I only, I only looked at this plan, so I never saw any other, any other supporting documentation, I just, I just saw the application, there's a waiver in there for something, I don't know what it is, but we'll have to deal with it later. Number two, there's a, a plan note, or a plan note that refers to a twenty-foot-wide public service, it was just on the plan, and I don't know where it is, or if it impacts anything here.
I, I can show that on the plan, I can tell you that it's, it's the line that runs to the Quonset hut.
Okay.
That's, that's easy, that was a branch.
Okay, that's fine.
So I can add that.
That needs to be added, yeah, so I guess in my comment, number three, we, we learned that the Quonset hut was approved by the planning board, that's fine. Number four, if, if, I would assume that you're gonna generate some, some waste, scrap metal, oil, and how it's gonna be dealt with, whether it's bins inside the building or dumpsters outside, you need to tell us how you're gonna deal with that. My thought on parking now, the public's gonna be here, you know, if you're driving your car up at five o'clock at night in December, it's gonna be pitch black, and I think that, I think there needs to be lighting, both on the building and the parking lot, I don't think it needs to go all the way down the drive, but. I don't think it needs to all the way down the drive it, but within the park, within the parking area, that needs to be lit.
Sure.
Again, I mean, now I've sort of changed my opinion. I don't know what happened five years or four years ago, but I do think there could be a little bit of landscaping out here, and I would think it would probably benefit you.
Right.
Probably at the entrance. I don't think it does much to go back to the building to landscape, but maybe at the entrance. And this is a tough one for me. The site plan review regulations requires the driveways and parking areas be paved. I'm not so sure, so concerned about the driveway, I think it'd be unreasonable asking to pave that. But my next comment is the ADA, and I actually looked this up, the ADA specifically says gravel does not comply.
Yup.
So, you know, and I don't want you to think I'm, you know, heavy here, but if you get sued by someone that says they can't wheel a wheelchair from the ADA space to the building, that's a problem for you. And I think it's, and I don't think the planning board should be doing. So I think the area around the building, including the customer parking, ought to be paved.
That's, that's currently not paved at all.
It's not paved at all, and I agree with John. I looked up the ADA regulations on--
Yeah, I mean, I'm not an ADA expert, but that was a pretty easy answer to find.
I totally agree with you.
There's a spilling error, and that's all it is. So I, you know, I mean, I don't think, you know, even though there's a few comments here, I don't think they're that serious. I just think that there's some cleanup needs to be done on the sites to make it work for the public.
Can I address what EBS made use?
Well, I've taken, I've taken this plan basically and highlighted in red, based on John's comments, okay? First one is a 20-foot easement, public service easement, we're going to add that on there.
My biggest concern was if it was, if it was going over the building, and no one ever picked up on it, that could be a problem.
Right, and they specifically call all those pole numbers, so it's very specific. Secondly, the, this apron around here, which would include the ADA handicap space and one customer space, as well as an apron 25 feet out from the building, extension of the building, what we're proposing is either asphalt or concrete pavement. So, the rest of it, we have, I have a waiver request for not paving the remainder of the driveway. As far as lighting goes, what we're proposing is to put a light on front of the building where the pay-- this is where the pays are, by the way. And then an additional light here on this existing pole, which would help cover this area over here. Most of this is barely even used for, it's more like--
I don't care about that. That's, that's reasonable. That's fine, yeah. It's more if you're parking a car, I want you to be able to get in the building safely.
Yep, exactly. And then, and then additionally, what we're proposing is some landscaping along the driveway here, and a screening here along this part of the, adjacent to that parking area. And I'm proposing no way spruce, just because we can't put arborvitae in, the deer just annihilate it. So, I mean, if, I think Dana on the last one said, I don't know what he said, but something else, but--
Whatever the speed, it was a type of juniper that's supposed to be, it was, it was a strain of juniper, supposed to be deer resistant. I'm not sure.
I've had good luck with these no way spruce.
I would rather see those.
Yeah, and then what I propose is to do, they're six to, six to seven feet tall, eight feet on center, to let them grow in. So that's how we would like to address those. Now, with regard to the, with regard to the materials being stored, I currently, yeah, we might even address that. He has an oil storage bin that, when it gets time, somebody comes in and retrieves it.
With service.
The rest of it is stored inside for when it builds up, and he brings it to recycling. So there's really no outside storage.
Then they just put it in the--
Yeah, just put metal in the--
And then, you know, there's a dumpster for scrap metal, just show it on the plan, so we don't have to get a call of, you know, what, is this too good or is it bad?
Right, right.
You know, I would assume you generate a fair amount of scrap metal, if you're going to put it in a dumpster. I think this, I don't care, but I think it should be shown on the plan, just so we don't see--
Totally agree. And then, and then moving forward with compliance, I don't know how, are you going to address that later on? Are you talking about those stuff too, or is there somebody that does a compliance check on this? I guess is a fair question for the board in general. I think that might be the fear.
Well, it would appear, I mean, it would appear that you've complied with your, with your 15 approvals, so, yes, we don't have any indication of the evidence.
I just mean moving forward, that, you know, at a later date, if somebody, if someone's going to come up for a compliance that we've added the landscaping and the lighting and that's--
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's not part of the building.
It's John Clark, okay.
Yeah, so we'll ask, we'll take the approved site plan and say, you know, he, you're ready, you know, you can open up now and do what you want to do.
And we reached out to Tom several times. I know he's--
I think the scrap metal--
He's very busy, but we reached out to him about the ADA requirement for the parking, and we did not hear back from him, so that's why I went and researched myself to find what you did, so that's why--
Tried him this week, might have chanced on.
I haven't.
Maybe he's on vacation.
Oh, is he? Oh, we might have tried this, but I don't know.
That's probably one. He's obviously pretty good.
Okay. So anyways, we just researched it and found what you found, that, you know, gravel's not acceptable for the ADA, so that's what we're proposing, so.
Again, I, I want you to be--
No, I, listen, we're on board.
All right.
No doubt about that. And landscaping is fine, the lighting is fine, so, I mean, Dan just wants to be able to move forward, and he has some state, sometimes they can buy for compliance checks, and he wants to be, you know, in compliance with, with state inspectors. So, the board sees fit that we could have some conditions of approval, is what I described, from what John has here, and then I can submit the plans to John for his review, make sure that those meet compliance before he's signature. And again, this doesn't get recorded, because it's a site plan.
You currently do commercial vehicles, only commercial vehicles? Excuse me, you're currently doing only doing commercial vehicles, right?
And now I've been doing some residence.
That's a beautiful.
Oh, I just have some concerns regarding, when I, when I see vehicle storage area around a service station, I become concerned about one vehicle becomes 27 vehicles. And with no limitations on that, that causes me concern. Further, when I think of vehicles going to repair, what triggers in my mind is a vehicle in need of repair often leaks. I understand where these vehicles are traversing this gravel area, and while they wait to be repaired or not, you still have a vehicle that may not be parked on any sort of a gravel, on any sort of a paved service, surface, that may or may not be leaking to gravel. Unless, and they all do it, unless and they all don't. But just when I see vehicle storage, vehicles in need of repair sitting on gravel, with no other limitations, that does cause me some concerns to give an approval to a project like this where we have, you know, guidelines and other things in proximity. That's a concern that I would like to see, some limitations and some very stringent guidelines to have to follow. Example being, you may have five cars, nobody who may sit more than, you know, X days. Understandably, there is a policing issue, you know, and of course, you know, the, the tower's resource in the strip's quite thin, but without that limitation in place, then there can be no further follow-up, should that one vehicle become three vehicles, become six vehicles that sit through the winter.
Sure.
I would just be fearful of getting approval if I couldn't--
The lengths we hook, we use for Paul's and Tageri Auto, but it was, I don't, I think no unrestricted vehicles.
But he was also parking over pavement that was in question of--
I was just talking about the duration of parking. We don't want, we don't want 10 junk cars sitting there and just sort of stealing--
I don't really want any junk cars sitting on gravel. And I know Paul's, Paul's pavement is questionable in several places, and I know at his expense, he did pave.
Yup.
And I'm sure that was a great expense, but that was at our request. So I would be very fearful of approving another repair shop that has not held the same status that we held Paul to, creating these higher, more visible, certified. It needs just a fairness, and also needs just protecting our community. I just worry about vehicles that need repairs sitting on gravel.
Kevin, if you look into the left of the building where the bays are, so when you pull in, the bays are the front of the buildings.
Yes.
So if you look to the left, and I don't have a scale with me, but it looks like there's room for at least two vehicles, maybe double stacked, you know, next, two next to the building, and then maybe two, two in front of them.
That's right.
I wonder if we could identify that area as--
It does. On his plan, where he's looking at even either asphalt or concrete, that side of the building--
That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about right there.
Right, that's, right, that's not shown as him changing the surface. He's only in the face of the building and to the left, but once again, not the side of the left, just barely.
But then we want to, we want to force you to do pavement, not, not--
Not pavement.
Not pavement, because Kevin's concern is--
Yeah, no, I understand.
Liquids weeping through.
Yep.
But that's not my only concern. My only concern is limitations on the number of vehicles that can sit.
But if we, if we were to, so if we were to pay-- I don't want to design this, but if we were to pay the area to the left of the building, so extend that apron over--
Extend this over.
You could probably, I would say easily four vehicles in there.
Yeah, probably more than six of us.
Would that make sense, Kevin?
I'm sorry?
Can you show them?
I would not have a problem if every vehicle that was allowed to park there was on pavement. Correct. But I would like to have a finite number of how many vehicles--
Well, you're a one-man band.
Are going to sit there, so, and nothing against you at all, Mr. Peppin, at all. I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud here that you could pave that too, and you could put four cars there, but when four cars become six, and it's not your fault if a customer can't afford to pay, the car sits there, they won't, you can call them all day, you want. You know, you can't just send it to the junkyard. They're not, they don't have two of those to have towed somewhere else, so the vehicle sits. If you can't do really anything about it, because it's not your vehicle, I know you built it state, you can claim it, you know, I know that process takes some time, but nonetheless, we have a disabled vehicle that we've allowed, because the numbers grew, to sit on a corner, I mean, to sit on gravel.
So if we were to extend that over to, extend this over here and make that pavement, and limit it to six vehicles max?
If, if, if there's pavement for six vehicles, you're allowed to have six vehicles sit, providing that they didn't sit for X number of days, weeks, whatever.
Sure.
That, I wouldn't have a problem with that, unless it was spelled out that specifically. Number of vehicles, you know, paved, parking for all, and none to sit more than so many days. Because that's sort of a standard we held other businesses too, that, just speaking a lot, I, I wouldn't feel confident at all if we were to project that didn't have those limitations.
So could we come up with some language that, come from John's review and time, like, something versatile?
Nothing against the project, that's just my--
So I guess, so I guess what we want you to do is sort of dimension that off, so we can stack six vehicles in there, or whatever it is. If you, if you want to limit it to four vehicles, that's fine. And then we need, we need language to be clear on the plan, and I can't know what we've limited Paul to, but I, you know, I would say like four, no vehicle can sit there more than 45 days. I think probably 30 days isn't enough, if that's a major project, maybe.
We could use the same language that you're using on that, you know?
Then Paul, then I don't know who did the calls.
So, I wasn't here the day it got approved.
Oh, no.
So we don't have those?
We have a process now where we actually file these things, but broader to--
Yeah, I don't approve--
They didn't refile.
How long ago was that?
It was January 2018.
It was an engineering firm ahead. It wasn't like the top three we usually deal with.
Which I would--
They were on Pennsylshire Street.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes.
I wasn't here.
I'm embarrassed, I don't remember.
But it was no mission of, I mean, it was, it was still John listed on the actual plan as far as the limitations we have for vehicles.
We talked about it at length. I'm pretty sure we did.
I'm sure this--
We talked about how long--
We made them on the final, you know, on H B.
It was Jeff and Eva.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah.
Was it really?
Yeah.
Well, then call Jeff.
I'd be glad to call Jeff.
Get a copy of the--
And get a copy of the site.
We'll put the--
The dimensions on here, the number of vehicles, and then we'll get the line, you know, how long they can stay. That make sense?
That would satisfy me.
I think that's fair.
Okay.
Because we hammered that up for quite a while.
Any other questions, comments from the board before we look at the--
You might, but we, since we will need some waivers, one being, well, I'll let you read. I've actually listed out four waivers here, because I went through the site review regulations pretty thoroughly. Now, just once you get them, I'll just put it down.
Well, I don't know about high intensity, you already got that.
Okay, maybe we can drop that off. So the, the first one is Article Three, Section One, the site plan shows, well, what they're requiring in that section is that you show the structures on the budding cars that are within 200 feet of the, of the lot. And we show dimensions to these budding buildings, but we don't show the building, because the scale of the, of the plan wouldn't allow us to do that unless we add multiple sheets to get there.
But isn't there a recently constructed house in that same area? Yeah, there's a recently constructed house, where there was a house before that.
Oh, that one? Oh, yes.
I don't even think construction's--
No, we can show that. We can show that. So I guess this is a waiver for the ones that are not directly in front of that lot, that makes sense. So the high intensity, so it sounds like John thinks that we don't need that.
Nothing's happening, so I don't think it's fair.
Traffic impact analysis was the other one. I think we have a DOT permit already, so I can submit a copy of that DOT permit, but I think we probably should get a waiver on that to protect the whole part, John. And then the parking lot design, what we're asking here is the apron that we talked about. And I'll, if you want to amend this to say at the garage bay entrance and westerly of the, the ADA parking spaces, and westerly--
Yeah. Eastward. East.
Okay, easterly of the building to include cars stored here.
Well, I was just saying, except for the note on the plan.
Okay.
Because you're going, you're going to modify the plan anyway.
So I would just throw those out there as, as, because there were three waivers that were asked for.
Okay. Talk about those. So why don't we open up a public hearing to accept any comments, questions from the public?
Mark Kucha, 204, something's with the road. I don't have any problems with this, as long as it meets all the approvals and the, let's say, accepted use in that, in that zone. That's all been checked out, so it's fine.
Thank you for that. Someone is asking a question. Mark, did you, did you get a chance to come to the hearing when, the first time around, when this happened?
Yes, I did.
So, did you have any concerns then about landscaping or--
Well, the only thing I, I had a concern with was that he, you know, the only thing I'm worried about is any site work that might affect the water going--
On to your property, sure.
That was it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, why don't we suspend the, the public hearing at this point? So any other comments, questions from the board before we address the waivers?
I, what I'd like to do, I, I know that Kevin and Dan probably don't want conditional approvals tonight, but I really think that we need to see the parking lot, have Kevin draw the, draw the parking and pavement out. It's a big concern of Kevin's, I think it's a big concern of everybody's, and see the, see the notes that were put on Paul's integrity auto, and make sure that they--
I think that's fair.
Rather, rather than forcing a conditional approval.
I, I want to see how they talk--
And I don't think, I think it's going to happen.
Size of Paul's building versus the size of your building versus the number of bays. I think, I, I do want to see that information again. Because we look at the number of employees and things like that. The size of his building and what he expected for traffic, and how many cars he expected to be repairing or waiting for repair. So, at this point, without that verbiage in front of you, I don't think I'd be comfortable acting that specific way for, but I could, for act on other ones if you need to.
And, and as long as there's no, like, interruption in Dan's business, I don't think there's an issue if he wants to come back.
Are you anticipating bringing in additional staff, or?
No.
Okay.
Miles?
Yes.
It's probably a good idea to get the owner of record on board with a letter with the final plans. Is that, I'm not sure if that was somebody--
We have cited. Can I have an authorization letter to represent?
Brian Turgeon, Brian. I think Turgeon's assigned the application, isn't he?
He's sent a letter authorizing Kevin to--
Yeah, okay. You can use that for--
Okay. Good call. So do we want to act on these waivers tonight, or continue the whole--
Well, I, I, let's just talk about them real quickly. The first one, I think-- The first one, I think, is pretty much a no brainer, Kevin does need to pick up the new house out there, so I would suggest that we have him pick up the house. I don't think two is required, three, I don't, I think that's gonna be a slam dunk. And then the fourth, well, the third one, rather, the parking lot design, I really would recommend that you wait to see what he comes up with. So I would do them all at once.
We don't.
And I think we also want to see the landscaping and the lighting on the plan, so I mean, this is not a complicated review, but let's just wrap it all up the right way.
Yeah, so as long as there's a sense that these waivers are reasonable with the discussion that we had.
I, no problem.
Okay.
Then shouldn't interrupt the business.
Help, we'll get all this stuff ready for the next meeting.
I think it's helpful, Kevin, because I think also, I think what else would address in terms of waste parts, how long they could, how they could be stored, or and I think there's also language perhaps about selling on the other property that they were.
Oh, right, yeah.
There was a prohibition about selling.
Selling vehicles?
Vehicles and or, I think there's a concern before a lot just selling miscellaneous things on the other property. Talking about, right, votes, and so I think you'll find the comments quite a lot in Paul's. We cover a lot of things that will be commented at this point.
Okay, well, I'll get ahold of Jeff and get all that information. I'm sure Jeff has the cup, there's a site we need to provide, so I'll get those.
So I think you do need a motion to continue to suspend it, continue the.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing done?
Thank you. And do you know the meeting date that?
We're gonna meet on the fourth, unless anyone has any. The fourth, the fourth of June?
I'm not there.
It's the day after the bid tomorrow, if you're not gonna be there.
I'm not saying you can't have a meeting.
I know, but.
Do I miss, repeat that again? The fourth. Are you not gonna be there?
No, no, I have, I'm leaving out of town in Boston.
That's not very far, you can go back.
I'm just gonna go see if I have a chance.
Yeah, no. We should have an option like that. We can go somewhere to. Okay. So we can all just can run into a problem.
Do we anticipate a heavy agenda or not?
I only know of this so far.
And I don't mind taking notes if you can read my hand scratch, but that'd be a problem.
Are you gonna write them on your hand or you?
You can play with it.
I watch them early. I mean, I don't mind doing that, I mean, if it's a three hour meeting, that might be a problem, but if it's one, if it's a two page, I can do it, so.
Okay, awesome. Then it's the fourth.
Fourth break, we'll make sure.
Thank you. You lead first on the agenda, so I'll just sit through all of them.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have just a few more things to talk about and wrap this baby up. I put all the minutes.
I did, I was gonna pick up.
Yeah, yeah.
Pick up.
We have. Ashburn, July, yes. Excellent, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
All opposed, or none? Correspondents, I didn't see any, there's a little flyer here that from the County Department of Environmental Service. Other business, the filing of approved plans at the registry and the application process. So John's provided us with an analysis of the plan filing.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, really, all you guys need to do is decide what, you need to come up with a fee to record something. You know, I did talk to a bunch of towns, Stratford is pretty, not lax, but their percentage of success in recording plans is pretty high. So I don't know how long it takes to get from this office to the registry and back, but.
And time spent there.
And time spent there, I mean, you know, I did talk to, the most times I said do it, talked to, said it was about ten or fifteen minute ordeal there. So travel time plus.
Fifteen minutes from here, maybe.
So.
Actually, it's twenty minutes because I live, I live just around the corner from the registry, yeah.
So twenty, so I mean, it's.
It's just an hour.
Hour fifteen or so, I don't know, you know, so I guess the selectmen need to decide what that fee is, is it fifty bucks, is it thirty? And then you brought up a good point, to record two, they're going twice, but then that gets sort of, you know, like.
I split, but.
And we don't know it's gonna, I personally, I would say the fee is fifty bucks, or whatever it is. Whatever the fee is to cover your time, plus the L chip, plus the recording.
It shouldn't be an aggregate point up the delivery to where you're going to find out.
I have to give them off. And then the only other thing that I would say is just put language in the, this is a one, that this fee covers one trip. And if for any reason the plan can't be recorded, that additional fees will apply.
But I think it should be spelled out as that same fee.
The same fee, right.
That same fee.
Well, it wouldn't be the L chip, it wouldn't be the recording, it would be the administrative.
Whatever that portion is.
Whatever that is, if fifty is the same reason. I don't know where you pay your steps, I can't tell you, I think it's reasonable, yes. I don't think, I personally, I don't think you're gonna do it in an hour, by the time you go down to stand, go down to your car, drive it, or get in, you, I don't know, I don't know how it is anything.
Listen, it's fifty dollars, I'll do it, it's like on my way home.
Well, whatever you all think, I don't know, I don't think any applicant's gonna balk at a fifty dollar recording.
What was the average fee from the towns you looked at?
They all, they were all different, but I would say fifty is right in there.
Fifty is reasonable. Fee covers one trip, additional fees apply if.
Is she gonna, is she gonna charge you for mileage?
No, it's one, it's one or the other. Well, how many miles?
Plus.
It's ten.
L trip?
No, it's ten from there, yeah.
Really? What's that, so is L chip, is one, the other one?
Oh, right. I'm thinking liberty, good for the recording.
Actual.
It is a one shot L chip, you don't even need to reference that, all you need to do is reference the fee schedule on the Stratford. Stafford, Stratford.
County fees, it's a lot cheaper.
Right, yeah, because they're all laid out like on the plan sides.
It's a bit different for all the plans.
Yeah, it would be the county fee plus the industry, that's it. It's in the website, it's in the registry, it's pretty good.
So I have filing fee of fifty dollars, fee covers one trip, additional fees apply if you need to go back, plus L chip and actual recording fee as provided by Stratford and the registry.
I would even wipe out L chip, just say plus recording, because the L chip is, you'll see it there, that's only for a lot of people.
Okay.
So.
Plus an actual recording fee.
Plus an actual recording.
As provided by Stratford and the registry.
That's right. Yep. I don't know how you made a check available, you know, if you require the check to be.
The fifty dollar check would be to Town Rowntworth and the other check is to the registry.
That's what I would do.
So have them call or ask how much?
Whoever's doing it, Sarah, Caroline, whoever's doing it here, it's very, very simple, you know, all they can do is measure the plan size, look at the website, tell you the fees.
Oh, okay.
It's very easy. We don't, there's a fee for these, we never record these, so it'll be the plans that we record. And then the L chip for a lot, you know, the lots.
So this is just an amendment to our policy, this doesn't change any?
Doesn't change anything on our, it's the selection.
Do we need to add that fee to the fee schedule?
You can actually add to the fee schedule, or we could put a note that recorded plans will be charged, will be assessed, will be assessed a fee per the course, I don't know how you want to even put it.
It's like we need to adopt this before we can.
Personally, I'd almost rather. I'd almost rather ignore the fee at the end, because if for some reason the plan doesn't get approved, then you have to give back the fee, so, you know, another step. So it might be easier to do, just to put like a, an asterisk saying that recording fees will be charged at the time of approval.
Just the less of accounting.
Right, right, yeah, I mean, I've never seen.
Unless it's upset, potential for upset. If they get through a, they're gonna be one happy to pay fifty dollars to get it done.
Sure, sure.
And we know they're allowed to get filed, so that's right.
Yep.
So this is all the select board to approve, adopt. And the tax watcher, who was doing it previously, has agreed to do it again. And then there was just an application process.
Yeah, I guess we wanted to sort of, Caroline and I have been talking about it, it's a sort of ongoing thing, like, so when an application comes in, who needs to get it, how many copies do we need, where does it need to be sent to for review?
Electronic is required or not, I mean, big copies, nice copies.
And, you know, just.
It should be all spelled out, where's the check, where's the need this?
Yes.
Well, so so many plans are required, and I can't remember exactly what it is, but that's spelled out, but where the snag, where the breakdown is, and I don't know why, but it broke down horribly listening because all three of these guys were experienced. Usually, and I don't know how they do it, but they always call me and say, yeah, I've got an application, can you swing, can I drop off some of the things? That typically happens. It's harder when you have like a Cumberland Farms with a Manchester engineering firm, because they may not know who I am. But I do think that the process is, you know, whether I'm here or somebody else is here, somehow, the person sitting in my chair needs to get those plans well in advance. And it's not just the plans, it's, I really want everything, and I want paper copies, I want the biggest full size plan. Electronic copies don't really do much, so, you know, whether, maybe we should spell out that a separate package.
Is mailed to you and they mail it, so you don't have to deal with that.
And then in terms of, and Pat Macklin had a different, I don't know what Miles' opinion is or this board's opinion is, but Pat was pretty strongly opposed to me recommending a plan, an application be sent to the engineer for review. He always wanted to make that call. Sometimes people are like, I know it's gonna be reviewed by the engineer, I'd like to save some time and just sort of compress the review period, I want, I'm happy to send it over there, I'm willing to pay the fee. You know, I don't know how you guys want to handle that, you know, I personally, I think, why would you want to waste? Why would you come here, get together and just say, okay, listen.
Right, then I need to review.
If they're willing to pay the fee, and they wanna, and they're agreeable, I would just send it there. You, I suppose there may be a case where I say it should be reviewed by the town engineer, you say, geez, it really shouldn't have been.
Right. The case is gonna have to be turned off, if you think it's gonna, I think we're gonna be one, we're receptive to hear your opinion. And I like the idea of by X day even, that you should have received plans, you know, hard and covered.
So, you know, in that case, if I were to make the call, I would just say, hey, this plan is, you know, is complicated enough, or it involves a lot of moving pieces that I think we have to send to the engineer, and we would, I think I would tell him, get another set over, and they can deliver directly to Jay Stephen.
I prefer the professional that we hired to make the call first. No, that's a big issue, Miles.
No, no, no.
Or we're sitting in a chair.
And I don't think, I hope I'm not mischaracterizing how Pat, what Pat's opinion was, but I'm pretty sure that he was, he always sort of wanted to weigh in on that before I just made the call, so. But, so if that's how the process is gonna work, I get directed to that. Maybe the time I say it, I don't think it's necessarily you all will get it, but that's, then we have the loss.
So would you just directly address the applicant and tell them to send the plans for review, rather than you wouldn't send it back to us?
That's what I did with Dana, I did it here in a public, at a public meeting, at a last meeting, if you recall, I said, you ought to get C J. And we all sort of nodded our heads, but it happened to be that Dana came in for a free application meeting and he wrote about the plans, I said, get those over to Jay for his.
Yeah, well, I just don't want to have to be responsible for like you telling me, me telling.
No, it'd be easier if I just tell the applicant, you know, get him over there for the review.
Okay.
Yep.
I also think that any reviews that come out should definitely be CC'd to Caroline and I, so that we have it for, like, I didn't, I didn't get, I didn't get Jay's review of the C J.
Well, and I wasn't sure whether or not it was appropriate for them.
Yeah, Caroline asked, Caroline asked me, should they forward it to the applicant, I said, yes, I mean, they paid for it, so they should see it. And plus, it's sort of wide blind side, I would say, you know, here you go.
I agree, I'm not a decision maker, so I.
Right, right, no, that was, it was a good question, and I think as soon as, I mean, most municipal engineers would just automatically copy it to the applicant, I don't know why Jay doesn't do that, but if you get it, just send it right out to the applicant, and send it to the board, so.
Well, I think most applications, most applicants in this process, timeliness is a factor, and anything that they can do to keep it moving along and get a heads up on a report or to send to a full review, I think that they'd be receptive to that.
I think Jay's hesitation was sending it to, directly to the applicant, for example, with this, with C and J not being sure about our stormwater regulations. He wants to be honest in his review, but he's not, he doesn't want to throw the town under the bus publicly necessarily about are our regulations up to date, do they include the latest stormwater regulations that are ordered by the state? Do we have a deficiency in announcing that out loud? That kind of thing, so that it's more, you know, I think his intention is perhaps more of an internal document for us to review. You know, and then, and then maybe factor into your review that you sent, I don't know.
For me, I'm just, I would, you know, I'm happy, I've known Jay a long time, I think he does a good job, I think he's thorough, I think he's honest, I would just send it right to the applicant. I have no.
And I think if he had, if Jay had the understanding that he knew this was going to happen, maybe his verbiage might be a little bit different if he was sensitive to deficiencies, right?
Maybe you ought to make that clear to him, and let there just let it go, somebody knows that.
That's fine, and there's been times when Jay says something and this board says, eh, you know, I mean, with the bullet mill, he brought up some points that we just couldn't resolve, and we, it wasn't we didn't listen, we just.
We took it under advisement.
Right, so, and that doesn't happen, so. Yep, I think that's the process of how long.
I also think we need to sort of discuss like how many plans that people should be submitting, because we are drowning in paper there, and it's hard to tell what is.
And I would talk about the drowning of paper too, but continue.
So it's almost like, so when an applicant drops off an application, I don't need nine of these.
Nope.
I don't need nine of these at this meeting, because this isn't the final plan usually anyways.
Right.
So can we say, you know, the, the regulations say one thing, it says that, I mean, it basically asks that a copy for every member of the board be given when you give your application, but the reality is that that's way too many copies and unnecessarily.
We don't look at them until the title.
Right.
You don't send packets to the members in advance, do you?
No.
Okay, then, I would say four, you know, I don't know how many is enough, I would say four, I mean, I want a full size set, but they can send them to me directly, so then, let's say, let's say that's an extra one, I think four senses more than enough.
I want to make sure everyone has a chance to see it, right, like.
So, yeah, so like we.
They have to be at the town office anyway, because it's a public hearing, they have to be publicly available, so they're here.
But nine is.
Small copies.
But nine is ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, would, would, would you as board members like it if, I mean, applicants are responsible for sending a digital copy, and usually you have to chase after them to do it, but if we sent a digital copy and you were forwarded a digital copy before the meeting, is that something that?
Oh, that would. That would work for me. I would.
Here's what I'll tell you about digital copies, they're horrible.
Yeah.
It was.
Well, even even with a massive team, you know, like, like the, they're just, they're so busy, they're very, very hard to look at, unless you're used to it, you know. Um, I think most people are gonna pull those up and just get ahead of it. Um, it's fine to forward them, for the board, for the members that can use them.
But what about, like, forwarding a copy of the application, just sort of have a general idea of what's coming before them?
I I I don't know, I mean, I, I think.
I think that gives us a chance to review it as a, as a project as a whole. We know in our back of our mind that you are gonna scrutinize it, that's what we count on, that's what we appreciate, you know, we know that's gonna happen, so I I, you know, I don't look at the type of trees on there, but I'd like to see the layout, how it how it falls in the land.
Maybe it would be helpful just to send an electronic copy to the board members, they can either choose to look at it or not.
Yeah.
If they have questions, I might say, then they come down here to the town hall and look at the paper ones, is that fair?
Yeah.
You know, I I usually send, in eleven by here, I I have an assembly zoning board in my town, and we will not take eleven by seventeens, because you, they're so small, you can't read them.
Yeah.
So I either want a full-size plan or I don't want anything. Um, so I wouldn't waste your time with eleven by seventeen, I think they're a waste.
I'm just. Except me. Yes. Twenty.
But unless it's an easy, simple plan.
Okay.
Unless, I mean, unless other people think otherwise, but I find.
So you think they should all submit the application in a, in a full size?
I, well, I, if the board members, I mean, you guys, if you can read those, I, I, I mean, the other way, it gets harder to read.
And plus officially.
No, I can't, I can't read any of this writing.
I figure me. I mean, they're fine for reference, to say, oh, yeah, I see that, but they're hard to read.
See, my glasses on.
I don't need glasses.
Oh, you might wanna reconsider that position.
So do you think, do you think that um, applicants should, should not even bring these to meetings?
Oh, they can bring them to meet, I think they're good for the passion, you know, is what I find, I see oftentimes with boards I work for is
Yeah.
you'll see a couple of big size plans on around the table, and then everybody will have the eleven by seventeens, and that way they can say, oh, well, you know, I can't really read this, but I can see that.
Yeah.
So I think they're helpful for the board, but I wouldn't waste, you know, so maybe one, one eleven by seventeen for each board member, and then four paper copies, that's probably fine.
Okay. What do you think about asking applicants to recycle their?
God, my God, this is New Hampshire, we have a lot of trees in Iowa. Well, the problem is, you're gonna ask them to do it, they're gonna walk out, throw them in the bin, so I don't.
Yeah, they're not gonna do it.
Just leave recycling bin right.
Control it, and we have a recycle, so I'm not worried about recycling it.
Yeah.
I know, fee.
So, I'm sorry to insert this, but I was hoping we could spend three minutes talking about the maintenance of the plants.
I just like the idea.
Um, the select board and planning board have both been um, blindsided by the lack of history, where there is history to be had. Um, and that's because planning files, we all know, are a mess, and so are zoning files. Um, and that is because they were historically filed by year and by name, which is a way you cannot find them. And the, so subsequently, um, a half dozen good natured people volunteered to try to organize that and get it into a map and lot format. Um, but they get um, partially into that and then overwhelmed, and so, um, now we have complete destruction in the planning office of the planning files. We also have too many copies of plans, and we have unofficial plans, so we have a mess. And so what I'm, um, Miles and I have um, talked about um, digitizing plans, but that's expensive, it doesn't look like it's gonna happen. And so what I wanted to talk to this board about, which would be in select board approval as well ultimately, but um, incorporating planning um, files with zoning and and building permits and everything else into the assessing files by map and lot, color coded, so that planning and zoning files have a certain consistent color within a map and lot, so they're spottable, findable, and we can find all the history to a given property. So I I just wanna know if there are any comments or concerns about that before I ask the select board about that. It is gonna mean ultimately, um, taking over all the file cabinets in my office likely, and so there will need, there will be a need for an additional file cabinet, I would suggest, in the select board office. But would conversely, open up a lot of room in the far office.
So currently you have the assessment.
I do.
And it's by?
Map and lot.
Map and lot, a mag and lot, yeah. Um, so you, you, you're proposing, so if someone comes in, this is for whatever lot, you put it with their assessing information, color coded, I think that sounds.
It's a duty.
Yes.
The one thing I would say is, I think that if you're gonna put a zone, let's just say, you're gonna have, basically you're gonna have a property file.
Yes.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have assessing, perhaps building permits, maybe a zoning section for a a a lot that has that, and then planning. The only thing I would suggest is that if it's a hanging folder, have individual folders for each of those four categories. So if John Q. Public walks in and says, can I see the zoning file, you don't have to give them the whole file.
Yes. Right, that's the plan, hanging files really for each property, and then all the planning folders within are red, and then all the building permits are green, and, you know.
When, yes, yeah. Then I think that's great, yeah, yeah, I think that's great.
Isn't this something, isn't this something we have to do though, because I mean, as as the record keeping is right now, there's gonna be an issue that comes up that something is solid, it's gotta be a pretty fine.
Okay, let me, let me give you an example, if you'd like one, a quick one.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we have to do this.
Now, the neighbors that fall to integrity are upset because they believe there's too many cars parked in the back at any given time. Um, and in different stages of repair or disrepair. We're gonna have a copy of of the plans, we just had to ask Kevin Macklin to go, I'm taking down a copy, and I hope he finds it, so we can finally find out what the actual site conditions were, so I can hold them accountable. Can't send the road enforcement officer and tell them, you're only supposed to have X amount of cars, and I can't, I don't know exactly.
We can't.
Well, the number.
Yeah, you can go buy it, best I remember.
It was through this reorg, you know, attempted reorganization process that was never figured out, that was never finished, that just.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Unless you're paying someone, I mean, that's when things get done, because if someone is being paid for a form of junk, the task, granted, that costs money. It it's a lot to ask for anyone to volunteer their time, and what's even worse is to begin a project and then leave it, just how far into it did you leave it, you know, the next guy's picking up the skirt.
Right. Yes, but.
Well, I'm sure we should have volunteers dealing with the town records, right?
But yet, we don't have a lot of, we have resources, so everybody's answer is always find a volunteer, and of course, people raise their hand and say, of course I'll do it. So that's why I would like to do this, and that way my office can control it, and we can do this with all the files going forward, and ten minutes here and ten minutes there, we can incorporate history.
Is there a positivity issue, or is this generally public record? I mean, we don't talk about assessing.
Well, if someone, if someone comes in, I mean, just tonight, um, we had this thing, we don't know it, we don't, I mean, I, we apparently don't have a copy of the approved site plan. We're sitting here looking at Kevin, go through his folder, it's a little, it's, we should, you know, if he went over to Madbury and said, hey, how, can I see the Pepin, um, you know, site plan that was approved in, I know, in fifteen, it would be two minutes, walk right in, grab the folder, you know, you'd have, you'd probably have Ms. attached to it, you know, and the, and the approval, um, everything right there.
But none of that paperwork is, there's no problem with a group of volunteers seeing any of this.
No, it's all.
Oh, no, no.
But I, I'm, but I'm, so Pat, Pat, Pat talked about seven years, having a pizza party, it's it's never gonna work.
But taking.
I mean, I think what Caroline is saying, if she has twenty minutes, she can go grab six or seven, whatever, bundles of junk out of the planning office, and she, she can, she can figure out what map and lot.
This is not a project that's resolved in the question, pizza party.
It's easily done by a staff.
If it's started and not finished, it's, is one of the worst things.
Well.
The first part of it's gonna be figuring out where it was left at by the next previous pizza party, you know, I mean, just.
Right. And one pizza party isn't gonna do it, even if we did that, you know.
Oh, right, someday.
Where, where, so where are you proposing to keep this this size thing?
So, so, um, we do have still flat file drawers, so if it can, all right.
Um, well, is that the one for tonight, senior day?
So there, there are two.
I, I, unfortunately, I did precisely, but I threw it away in that garbage can, and I had a folder to about that thing.
So.
So there's no, you can fold ten sheets easy.
You can.
You can, and if it's more than that, you can rip that in half, like, undo the staples into halves and fold it in two parts.
Yeah. Fold apart. Yeah.
That could be a problem.
I don't wanna go through.
Um, if it's, you know, bedrock can be odd, and it's really an inch and a half thick, then it can be the flat file.
Probably like that.
That fits in them.
Okay. Okay. Yes, thank you.
And I guess, and that's a pretty thick plan set for us, so.
It's a board.
That, that, you know, and if it was twenty sheets, just try to, you know, just pull it, just pull it apart.
Yeah, pull it apart.
But I would not use a flat file, because you're never gonna go up, you know.
I wanna see the flat files for the subdivisions of streets, so that, like, for town markets and, you know, those things.
Sure. Yep.
Yeah.
Is there any concern with you spending your time on planning board activities, like, I don't know how it works for budgeting.
Um, to be clear, this is gonna be like, you know, ten minutes a week to infinity, at this, you know, particularly with our current situation, but
Oh, okay.
you know, the plan is to start here and move forward with the new plans in this way, and then, you know, under direct volunteer supervision, I can, you know,
Okay.
control it and have a plan for how to integrate.
Does the whiteboard have to approve?
Do you s-? Do you still want, like, zoning cases and planning work cases to be compiled in those minimal folders?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh. I think everything ought to be integrated, and yes, into folders. Well, we can talk about that, colored files, I'm not sure if we need folders, the colored, colored files.
Well, see, the only thing is, like, those minimal folders, though, you have, like, all of your receipts.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea, so they don't fall around.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but as Mike said, you know, I just, I just wanted to get the conceptual approval and concerns addressed, you know.
Yeah.
Select board.
It sounds great. It's tough, and I agree with the starting point, from this point forward, it's sort of do it, and then it should be at the back, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it's a lot faster as well.
Yeah, we didn't have assessing files at all before I started. I got that one done, it took ten minutes a week for.
It faded.
For a while.
For a long time, but we got assessing files.
She was down.
Mm-hmm.
So did we hammer up the application process?
Yeah, exactly.
I think, I think.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up, and I, and it was a weird thing to this application, that we had three experienced applicants, so three experienced engineers, so I all three of them screwed up the notice, well, I don't know if Dana did, I guess he did get it.
He, he did, I, I caught them.
He caught it?
Yeah, I caught it.
So, you know, that's something to point, I don't, and again, I don't think you should have to go through the plans and say, these people need to be noticed, but you should, someone should say, are the people that prepared these plans and that have certified these plans, or have the sort of pieces of these plans, are they, have they been notified? And the reason it's important is, just so everybody knows, Mark West, uh, is a wetland scientist on one of these projects, I can't remember which one, I think it was on CJ.
Yeah, CJ.
He doesn't work for Dana, so he would, he might not know where this meeting, and and that's why it's, it's required. Um, with, with Jeff Aliva and and the surveyor in his office, it's not so important, because Jeff's here, the surveyor works for him, or works with him, so, but it's still, it's a law, I mean, it's, it's a statute.
Yeah. No, I know, that's, that's the one that I.
So it has to happen. And you don't want anybody to say that the notice was flawed, so I don't know how three of these guys, like, I sent it to Jeff, I said, what, what happened? I don't know, I guess I forgot, you know, you do this all the time, you know, but, so.
I think it's the people in their office who are doing it, or not.
I don't know.
Yes, they are not the ones that are doing it.
They haven't noticed.
Cheryl, who was here for Pepin the first time, it was, she typically does the notices, it's, it's always an admin, it's not typically.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it was weird that three, again, it was three, you know, it wasn't like three homeowners, it was three experienced.